So in particular, I would like to focus on water and wastewater plans, current existing plans and into the future. So if everyone's got a copy, if we can go to the second page, basically just the Great Lakes, I'm sure you all know this, 20% of the world's freshwater resources. Only 2% to 3% is a renewable resource. The rest is a glacial deposit. And I guess we need to think about what the climate change impacts are going to be on lake levels. And with a particular focus, you'll see I put a pin where Lake Simcoe is. It's a tiny little lake compared to the rest of the Great Lakes. It's a fairly shallow lake, so it doesn't contain that much water. So just sort of put that into focus. And then the next page, I'm sure some of you may not be aware, but York Region since 2005 has been permitted to have what's called an intra-basin transfer, which is movement of water from the Lake Simcoe Georgian Bay watershed down to Lake Ontario. And that diversion of water is allowed under the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence River Basin Sustainable Water Resources Agreement. I was on the Annex Advisory Panel while this agreement was being negotiated, and York Region made presentations to the panel. And it was grandfathered at that point in time. But, and so you could see, the next page points to the fact that York Region has permission and is diverting 19 megalitres a day of Lake Simcoe watershed water down to Lake Ontario. So the next slide shows basically the plans going out to 2031. And from York Region's website, this is the preferred alternative. And its general intent looks good because finally there's going to be a sewage treatment plant on the south side of Lake Simcoe, so that water can be taken from Lake Simcoe and returned to Lake Simcoe. However, it's not going all the way down to the hydrological divide. The hydrological divide is that squiggly line that goes south of Aurora. So you can see that the infrastructure is still going to be diverted south to Lake Ontario. And the final slide is showing the amounts of wastewater being transferred. It's hard to tell how much diversion is going to be allowed under this plan up to 2031, because you have to do the math, you have to remove, deduct the water transferred from the wastewater returned. But in that wastewater also goes stormwater. And it is the stormwater that is really the transfer or diversion. And it's difficult to tell what that amount is. But just looking at these very large numbers for wastewater from that middle section, from the Aurora area that will be moving south, it appears that that 19 megalitres a day diversion will have to be increased. These plans, I understand, have not completed environmental assessment. But they also, if that increase is going to be allowed, it has to be granted by the signatories to this big Great Lakes-St. Lawrence River Sustainable Water Resources Agreement. And that means it has to go to the governing body, and all of the governors from the eight Great Lakes states and Ontario, Quebec, have to agree to it. And as far as I know, that process hasn't even started. So just so you know, there is a community way over in the west side of Lake Michigan that was finally granted permission for an intra-basin transfer, a new one, after 10 years of deliberation and public comments. That diversion, that area, that community sits right on the hydrological divide, and their groundwater is contaminated with radon. So they meet the exceptions criteria. This diversion does not meet those exception criteria. So it's going to be a challenge to get any increase in that 19 megalitres per day diversion. So that's our concern. We need to treat the Great Lakes water with all water with a great deal of caution facing climate change impacts and particularly Bill 66 wanting to place infrastructure or require infrastructure for new employment lands where it's currently not designated for employment lands. That's the essence of our concerns.
And I believe what you're saying is that the Upper York would trigger a requirement for an agreement under the Great Lakes Agreement. But I would see the Upper York as reducing the intra-lake transfer and therefore not requiring one. I thought the agreement is required if you're increasing your transfer, not decreasing.
That's right.
I'm probably simplifying things.
That's correct. But I'm just, that last slide, you could see the middle section there. That area is still going to be covered by water from Toronto and wastewater returned down to the Duffin's Creek.
Why were you referring to a 10-year timeframe to achieve one of these agreements if we don't need one for Upper York?
Because if that intra-basin transfer is increased, and it's not clear from the documents posted on York Region's website whether that increase is going, whether there is going to be an increase. But just looking at these numbers, it looks like there would be.
Okay, so then maybe I just go through staff and just verify. I would have thought Upper York would have reduced.
Mr. Mayor, you want to speak to this?
Well, Mr. Chair, I have a little difficulty connecting this larger picture with Bill 66, which is the agenda.
Yes, I don't disagree.
But however, I have the greatest respect for Ms. Meader and her association. We share concerns about Great Lakes water quality. And I would suggest that if Commissioner Mahoney and her could have this conversation offline, it might be much more conducive to settling this issue of intra-basin transfer. This was a matter before council several years ago. And we have a very strong background in that area and a compelling background to seek that hydrological balance.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor, you have any other words to say? I think that Ms. Meader will work with.
Just a quick, if I could, from Mr. Mahoney, if we anticipate the need under this work for an approval for an intra-basin.
Mr. Mahoney? Three, Mr. Chair, Mayor Taylor's interpretation of the approvals requirement is correct that one of the advantages of the Upper York project that's been recognized by the province in their government review is the reduction of an intra-basin transfer. We did in, six years ago, we were the first to create with the province under the agreements that the deputy is referring to. And we went through the full prior notice and consultation with all the affected Great Lakes states and got our intra-basin transfer approved. And that intra-basin transfer is required because as committee members know, we purchase 80 to 90% of our drinking water from Peel and Toronto. And to move that Lake Ontario drinking water north of the divide requires then to have, and us, because we're the ones doing the transfer, to allow that water to move north. We do have some return flow going back to Duffin Creek. But with Upper York, more of the groundwater and the Lake Simcoe water that's removed for drinking water will be returned to Lake Simcoe through the Upper York project. So in fact, the amount that's permitted, we don't need to exceed. Our current transfer is less than we got fully permitted through the prior notice and consultation process with all Great Lakes states.
Thank you. Mayor. Thank you. Councilor Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too was having trouble making the connection between the Upper York Treatment Plant, et cetera, and Bill 66. Can I try to summarize what I'm thinking you're saying? Because here we're to talk about Bill 66. And we've talked about the Upper York for half a decade. And what you're thinking is that Bill 66 will increase industrial development and maybe down the road, maybe residential development above the divide. And that there's a greater potential because there's more development from industrial, commercial development, and maybe possibly residential up north of the divide. And therefore, the transfer potentially could increase because of Bill 66. Am I summarizing what you're thinking correctly?
You are summarizing it correctly. Thank you.
Ah, I would appreciate a letter maybe from your organization or something that gets more into that. Because, you know, like I would say that certainly other councillors that are here, who have been here for a while, we're very well aware of the Upper York and the proposals of the staff, et cetera. But I hadn't made the connection until I made it in my head, not from you, but from me, saying, I think that's what you're saying. I'd appreciate more information, less on Upper York, because I understand Upper York, but the implications of Bill 66.
Of Bill 66. Sorry. Trying to be concise, I will briefly explain to you what I'm aware of happened when the Honda plant was built at Alston. There was not sufficient water for that very large factory. And I think that's the kind of industry that this Bill 66 is envisaging. And basically what happened there, Collingwood got a grant from the province to put a bigger pipe into Georgian Bay and to send water south to Alston for the Honda manufacturing facilities. They did that at great cost. They put many Ts along the way, hoping municipalities would connect to it. None have. Very quickly Honda figured out they didn't need drinking water quality for a lot of their manufacturing purposes. So they didn't in fact take much water from Collingwood. And they got a permit to put a pipe into an adjacent river to use for their manufacturing processes. They quickly started draining the level of the supply of water into that river. MOE came in and said, you can't take this much water out of this river.
Ms. Meader, I think I'm going to cut you off there. We're going too deep into Honda. Anything else, Councilor Hayes?
No, but I'd appreciate a little bit more explanation.
I think that Mr. McGregor made a valid point. Maybe Ms. Meader could talk to our staff and go over some of this stuff. Okay, I'm going to ask Councilor Jones just to receive the deputy at this time. Others in favor, against the motions carried. Thank you very much.
Things in there though, that we collectively have asked different provincial governments to undertake with relation to the process and trying to streamline the process, which I think is good. But I'd like us to maybe walk through that before we deal with the individual resolutions. Because I'm sure, or maybe I'm wrong, I'm sure some of the representatives around the table are going to talk to their resolutions or letters that we've received from the local municipalities. So in advance of that though, I'd like to kind of understand a little better the deposition that we're putting forward. I think, by the way, there's nothing wrong with this council as we have had with previous provincial governments. They always, anytime we ask something from them, they take forever to get back to us. When they want to know something from us, there's always a strict deadline. At the very least, I think we need to be asking the provincial government to extend the deadline for comments. This is a very, and again, there's a lot in here that's good, and there's a lot that's raised a lot of questions. And I think some of it has been misinterpreted by some. And then there's just things that are unbelievable that are in here. So I think as the minimum, we should be asking the provincial government to give us an extension to comment on this. Because even with the explanation today, and perhaps even next week, we could get a more detailed presentation on this. I just think it's too important to just go to say, well, let's get our comments in because the deadline is this week. No, let's ask for an extension. We've done that previously with comments. And we most definitely should be doing it with this one. As much as I think there's good things in the bill for us as well.
Okay, so I think what you're really talking to is E 1.6, which is the letter, the correspondence from Mr. Freeman. So what I'll do, Mayor Scott Petty, I'll ask Mr. Freeman to give us some calls notes on this, on his letter and what's happened with Bill 1, with Bill 66 on that. And if you want to, instead of amendment, we'll put a little amendment on the back of this one to receive. And also, we would ask that, we ask the province for more time to, for consideration on our comments, for all comments coming back from all municipalities. I'll come back to you on that one. Now, Mayor Bob Velacca, before I get to Mr. Freeman, you wanted to pull 1.2? Because it's all, no one else had pulled it, but you wanted to speak to it? Sure. Okay, so let's do, I'll go off on a little bit because I got Mr. Freeman ready to go. I'll do him right now, and then I'll come back to you, sir, okay? Go ahead, sir.
The intent of Bill 66 is to give businesses more flexibility to create jobs. It's to facilitate job creation. It enables a local municipality to pass what's called an open for business planning bylaw. And it's fairly vague abroad in terms of what that would be. And we do have a number of questions related to that. It, again, is intended to streamline planning approvals. And there are a number of acts that are exempt from what would be applicable in considering an open for business bylaw. So my memo, my recent memo for today identifies that we have some comments. Overall, we're always supportive of encouraging job growth and economic development opportunities. And my understanding is that use of an open for business bylaw is intended to be rare. It is very similar to a minister zoning order that a minister of municipal affairs could pass. But it is driven by a local municipality that may initiate this and want to have an open for business bylaw passed. There is some criteria that is identified. It is strictly for employment use. And that permitted use is intended to have a job creation threshold of 50 jobs from municipalities that are, that have a population less than 250,000 people. And 100 jobs from municipalities with a population of more than 250,000 people, which would apply in our cases. There are sometimes situations that may occur where it's appropriate to expedite some economic development opportunities. However, our comments really focus on the need for some safeguards in the process that would need to be considered at the same time when open for business bylaw is being contemplated. The first area, and I'll refer, I'm working through the memo on today's agenda and page two. We believe that there should be some form of public consultation for the consideration of such a bylaw. There is no requirement under Bill 66 for any public consultation. Notice is only given after the fact. And in many cases, residents would not be aware of an employment use that might be contemplated anywhere. Again, this applies across Ontario, not just in the GTA, but it's a tool that could be used across Ontario. We've identified as some other safeguards that are respectful of natural heritage features needs to be maintained. We've identified some other standards such as Clean Water Act, Great Lakes Protection Act, just safeguards that are in place that, you know, depending on the use, and it is just use specific. We don't know, you have to think about contemplating what types of uses this might be. It could vary. So safeguards that ensure that we are protecting what needs to be, even from a public health perspective. We are recommending, therefore, that the province identify additional criteria, put safeguards in place. We do comment on the very quick commenting period that the province has given us. We think that at a very minimum, there should be a 60-day window for us to be able to review these types of changes to legislation. And those are all identified in our memo. We have an attachment to the memo that walks through in a little more specific detail some of our comments, including the need for public consultation. These are tools that local municipalities can use. There does not appear to be, as part of the process, a role for regional municipalities. So regional conditions that would typically go into a development application, how do we ensure that those conditions are discussed and implemented? Safeguards, as I mentioned, for source water protection, public health, hazard lands, natural heritage system features. So there are a number of things. We do have, obviously, we plan for employment in a very comprehensive manner. We do have a number of employment lands that are vacant. We would hope that where possible, our planned employment areas can be made use of first before going outside of that. There is a, you know, a concern that staff have, and it was reiterated a little bit in the deputation about, you know, the need for municipal services, depending on where a use and how big that use may be, what's needed in terms of infrastructure that may be outside of our master plans or outside of our capital plan. So those are our considerations, Mr. Chairman, and if you have any more questions.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Scott Petty?
So, Mr. Chair, thank you for that. And compliment Mr. Freeman both engaging the local municipalities and obviously very thoughtful process in responding to this bill. And I think, and again, maybe, I hate to do this to you, but maybe for regional council, and again, I can propose some wording as others can as well, I think we probably need a resolution at regional council that brings this up a little bit more and is a bit more. You've done it, and just in your commentary, you've done it, you've done it quite well. But I think in our resolution, we need to kind of divide this bill up a little bit. And the processing part, the streamlining part is something we've all been advocating for. I think it's our official plan, some of the work we've done here, certainly some of the work we've done, I can speak to Markham. It started several years ago. We're still trying to get comments out of some of provincial agencies, even though it's been years in the making. And, you know, we're getting there, but it's an ardent amount of time. And I think it does add to the cost, and it does impact ultimately on the affordability of housing within, not just York Region, but the province of Ontario. So I think in our resolution, we need to really kind of make it bold and distinctive between streamlining the process for approvals and then concerns that I think, again, Mr. Freeman has articulated quite well. When I've been meeting, and I know several of us have, but when we've been meeting with provincial ministers, particularly the ones that are directly responsible for some of the elements in this bill, I've always made it very clear, Mr. Chairman, that we should have high environmental standards. That should not be an issue. We shouldn't have to disregard the environment. The main issue has been, let's determine what those are, set the parameters for what those are, but get through the process quicker. The frustration has been where we think we know what the parameters are, and then we deal with a particular application. And the commentary, the process that someone has to undergo quite often is outside those parameters. And you kind of figure, wait a minute. And we experienced it ourselves with the bridge on Verdale. The councillors from Markham will know. I mean, years to get MOE and M&amp;R approval, even though we exceeded the standards that they set out. So if we're, if we experience that as a municipality, when we exceed the standards that are set, you can just imagine multiply that by all the activity that's happening across the GTA and across Ontario as to the delay that's caused on something even when we're meeting those standards. I don't know if I've said this well, but I think our resolution should split sort of the different components of Bill 66. When it comes to streamlining, when it comes to perhaps a bit more control from the local municipality about what they see as good planning, and to your point, you know, I guess you can trust us at the local level that our bylaw will indicate that you have to adhere to regional conditions. But that should be covered in the act. I mean, again, not knowing after Tuesday's announcement where things are going. But we want to make sure that the levels of government that have to put in a response to major applications do in fact get the opportunity to insert those in the planning process. So I very much agree with that. So the comments are good. And then I just, you know, I just cannot believe, and I know there's been a reaction to things like the Green Belt. Again, I think some that have reacted have overreacted because they feel that we're somehow, you know, open season on the Green Belt. I think it's obvious that it's not. I think it was very specific related to the types of uses. And some, by the way, I believe, if we check the previous resolutions of this council, again, we've even asked for certain locations within the Green Belt bordering for hybrid series highways for the opportunity to have some economic development in those communities. So it's not open season. The other thing though, I think we should, and this was made, the point was made at the GTA mayor's meeting just this week, fear that under the guise of bringing employment to communities, that lands get opened up, and then somehow it will be switched to residential in the Green Belt. And absolutely, I think we should be asking for very tight controls that lands in the Green Belt, if there are lands identified either by us or by the province that are key for economic development, cannot be converted in the Green Belt to allow or permit more housing. There is more than enough land over the next 20, 30, I'll say 50 years in the GTA to provide housing for the population. I even think, I have some thoughts on that, we'll save that for the strategic session. But there's more than enough land to accommodate the growth that we're currently getting in the GTA, even if we were to increase the numbers of immigration, because we may have to do that in order to keep our economy strong. There's more than enough land. So the comments are good. I just think in our resolution, we need to kind of make parts of it a bit more distinctive. The streamlining, the processing, what we strongly support. But absolutely, the environment needs to be protected. And they may turn around and say, we'll put it in your bylaw. I'm not sure that would withstand the type of vigor that that would need before ALPA or any other agency that got the opportunity to hear an appeal on that bylaw. But we need to, or maybe you're going to tell me it can't be appealed. Okay, so that's fine. So then I want to make sure that that protection is there to say, and I'm not sure how it's worded in the bill because I haven't had time to check, but I'll paraphrase, but to say that development has to have no regard to the Great Lakes or to the water source protection is absolutely ridiculous. So I think we need to point out the ridiculous parts of this bill in a very strong way. And in a very strong way, we need to say, this is what's right with this bill because we've been asking for some of these things as municipalities to streamline the process.
Okay, sir, so what I'm looking for is, I think what we're mainly is for all your comments, is that we need to have a delay in the approval of that asking and give it more time for us to make comments. So I'll come back to you.
I agree with Mayor Scott Petty that I think we need to outline as clearly as possible the areas where we'd like to see consideration for greater rigor, if you want to call it, or the additional criteria. I think you referred to the term, Mr. Freeman. I guess what I'd also be interested in is, unfortunately, I'm not optimistic. But that's, I think this bill is going forward in a non-optimistic urgency change. But maybe we will, and I think we should make attempts to, at least, you know, if it is going to happen, then this is how it should happen kind of approach. But I would say, I would also be very interested, is there a, often on some of these things, there's a municipal planning group or working group or coordinating with municipalities? Because I'd like to be ready for the next step, which is when the municipalities have to start to deal with this and put in place some sort of, you know, criteria along with bylaws, so that the municipalities have had a mutual conversation about ensuring things, as Mayor Scott Petty noted, about ensuring that, you know, referring and getting a regional comment, some of the other, so that we can build in, if it's not built in by the province, that, you know, the strength, the criteria that each community desires. But we'd like to see that opportunity. And I'll finish here with one last question, it's a bit of an odd one, but I don't think it's that odd. I guess I'm curious, is there a mechanism right now to put lands into the Green Belt if someone so chooses? And the reason I'm asking that, was there ever a discussion, a lot of people talked about how the Green Belt might be up for grabs. A lot of people said, well, maybe there'll be a process where it's, you know, for every acre in, there's one, or out one acres in or two acres in. Would a municipality be able to pursue something like that if they were wanting to, you know, deal with this after it's passed, where there was some also requirement about additions to the Green Belt or something? So that lands in the Green Belt are prime for employment. If this is the legislation, were to be enacted, there could also be a possibility for a requirement that otherwise wouldn't.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, the two questions. Yes, there is a group, the planning commissioners meet monthly in York Region. We collaborate on a range of things. And I can tell you, we've had a discussion about Bill 66, and we'll continue to do that. And I think that if there are not safeguards that are put into the legislation itself, which I hope there is, we would definitely be collaborating and come to an agreement, I would hope, on the collaboration and conditions that need to be considered from a regional and local perspective. With respect to the Green Belt and if lands go in or lands add or added, the Green Belt, the province is in charge of the Green Belt plan. There are, as you know, there have been times when the province has had growing the Green Belt initiatives. They have opened up the Green Belt. Belt initiatives, they have opened up the Green Belt for review. Municipal official plans are really the avenue that go beyond the Green Belt and could add to that, whether the province was to pick some of that up in, you know, a review of the Green Belt to add those lands, that would be something that sometimes does very well happen. But I think it would be up to, in the absence of that, it'd be up to the municipalities and the official plans to identify lands that we want to protect. And I think we do, I think we already do have a very good natural heritage system set up designations, not only in the region's official plan and the green line system, but in all of our local municipal official plans that are being updated to conform to the region's plan, we do have that. But there isn't a trade-off or any provision like that in the bill.
So this might be new to me, I guess I had the question, I just ask it because I don't understand this as well as you clearly, but would you, would you see any advantage in one of the inputs that we provide to the provinces, asking them to look at some sort of mechanism that would allow municipalities who so chose to require that kind of formula, and that they would create a mechanism within the Green Belt Act to allow that process to add to the Green Belt?
I think first and foremost, there needs to be very clear criteria that you stay of the features that should be protected in the Green Belt or in any of our official plans. So I would focus on that, on the level of scrutiny and protection that, you know, proposed uses being considered under. We can certainly raise that as part of our comments about adding lands back in. Again, it depends on the specific location of where that might be, and what goals we might have to compensate for that.
And, yeah, okay, thanks. And perhaps there's other ways, right? I guess a municipality could require, could require that, a development that was wanting to pursue this, then you could require that they have to put lands into some sort of public ownership, or something that's not going to rebuild, but is still safeguarding additional lands that would be, you know, an offset or...
Through you, Mr. Chairman, it is absolutely contemplated that conditions would be imposed by an open for business bylaw that would be determined by the local municipality and the minister. So there could be conditions like that that are embedded into that bylaw.
Thank you. Cal Freeth?
I really appreciate the report, and especially the appendix, and the information was very interesting and very helpful in understanding it. To be very frank, I didn't understand all the details of it. I start off with, I have a little bit of trouble with page two, in the middle of page two, recognizing this, York Region's support of efforts to stimulate business investment created jobs, and this is where I have troubles with it, and make Ontario competitive. Now, that presumes that Ontario's not competitive now. And I don't think that we had any trouble, correctly, Mr. Mayor, when we brought in Honda and General Motors, and a whole bunch of big businesses, and there's a new one in Newmarket, which I was quite pleased to see the picture of, with the mayor, I'm not sure if he was there, the mayor or the deputy mayor at the time, and all of those kinds of things. I almost gagged with the name of this act. The presumption is really crazy, vis a vis York Region. So I have trouble with what might prevent businesses from coming, and the provincial government has its hands on it, it's part of their responsibility. Hydro rates, and they are amongst the highest, and I admit that, and transportation issues. Councillor Ferry raised the issue about 50% or 60%, that number in York Region, saying that's the number one issue. And he's absolutely right, and it needs to be carefully analyzed. I do support some movement of small amounts of land out of the Green Belt in specific situations. And that's what this is all about, the Green Belt and the Oak Bridges Marine. There's a piece of correspondence from Stovall on the matter of frontage on the 404. And Mayor, can you correct me on the number of acres? But in the last year or two, we worked to remove, I think it's about five acres at the 404 and 19th, out of the Green Belt, or I think it was in the Green Belt or the Oak Bridges, or one of those, it's the Marine, sorry.
And just to clarify, because I don't want this to be a door that gets open for a lot of discussion, it was inadvertently put into the Oak Bridges Marine, it never may have met the mapping criteria that they set up.
Okay, thanks. We stick to the, stick to the letter.
But I do support Stovall's thinking about that matter. And we know that when Honda came, they wanted to be on the 404, and they're a big development. So I do, would want to have more discussion about it, but I have no great problem with some aspects, and we know with it. But I think our priority, Mr. Chair, is to be the environment. Mayor said it well, the Green Belt and the Marine, and our residents support the Green Belt as it is now, the Marine as it is now. We are curtailed somewhat by those two, but I haven't seen the growth of the York Region being curtailed too much by that. So I think the way the mayor said it, and I think we can send something, or maybe see something from staff at the council meeting when we get to deal with this, which is, I think, two weeks from now, I think that's very important. I did have one question, and the, and it goes back to what the chair joked about earlier, about Rouge National Urban Park. The holdup in the Rouge National Urban Park over the last two years, almost three, has been the final transfer of land that's in the Green Belt and a little in the Marine to Parks Canada, and it hasn't been finished yet. Are there any implications in this bill, and I'm certainly not going to say the name, but in this bill, Bill 66, that have implications for Rouge National Urban Park and the transfer of land, and the potential of use of that land for other purposes like development? Oh, I did have one more, and that, Mr. Chair, the mayor is betting on when he says that this should be, we should be extremely strong on non-residential, that this only deals with industrial, commercial, et cetera, industrial mainly. And we need a resolution on that one, because if, we all recall the video that was made in February with the current now premier, who was speaking to all the developers about how to get land out of the Green Belt. He was not talking about industrial land, he was not talking about commercial land, he was not talking about anything else but residential. And that's what was the thought where this might be coming from. So I'll go back to Rouge National Urban Park. Is there any implication for that in this?
Okay, so, Mr. Freeman, I had no idea what the question was, but go ahead, sir.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I want to be really clear that the only way open for business bylaw gets contemplated is by a local municipality. So whether it's Rouge Park or any other lands, it would only be contemplated if the local municipality had a desire to put, in this case, an employment use in a particular location. So I don't believe Rouge Park would come up as part of that, but that is just, to be clear, that is the intended. It doesn't have to be used by a local municipality, it's a tool that would be available in the event that a local municipality wanted to use it.
Thank you. Mayor Marques, please.
I read through a 2017 report from a regional council that spoke to vacant employment land inventory, and it speaks to the fact that the supply of vacant employment lands remains healthy and needs to be protected, and it states that there's over 2,500 hectares. And I'm just wondering, has that changed substantially, or is that currently where we sit?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, all that has not changed. We have over 2,500 hectares of vacant employment land. That was an update that we did just last year. That means that one-third of our employment lands are vacant.
Well, thank you. And so, Mr. Chair, as Mayor Scott Pitti mentioned, in regards to residential lands, we have more than enough, and I feel that, looking at this, we have more than enough lands when it comes to employment. And I think that, you know, bypassing protections for the environment to change lands, I think it's more of a need, it's more of a want than a need, and I think the development community wants certain lands. We have more than enough lands to, that are, that can be used and utilized currently. And so I think that bypassing these protections in the name of cutting red tape, I think is the wrong way to go, and that's why we imposed Bill 66 at Aurora, and I hope that the, you know, our, my colleagues around the table and the rest of the communities go along that route, because I think that, I strongly believe that the land is there. They don't need the land, they want the land, and I think it's time that we tell everyone, we've set forward a vision, we've created an official plan where we want to put employment, where we want to put industrial, and they need to follow those plans. And I think it's time that we start to stand up and say that.
Okay, sir, thank you, and I'll come back to that. Each municipality is in a different position. King is 100% protected, 99.9% protected, Oak Bridges Marine, Green Belt. We also have the highest residential portion of taxes, 95 to 5%. So it's about sustainability for some municipalities. And as Mayor Scott Pitti said, years, I pulled out six resolutions from our council, from regional council, dating back years, decades, saying strategic employment lands along the 400 series highways. Everybody stood up for that. And we're not saying there's an onslaught, and somebody said, oh, this is what's going to open the floodgates. And I gave an example of just one situation that happened in King. And it was somebody that had came forward with a proposal for a very large-scale residential development on the Oak Bridges Marine. And they were trying to wiggle it as an old hamlet, an existing old hamlet dating back 100 years, oh, we can prove on a map it was a hamlet area, and, and I told someone, I said, our record of standing up for the Green Belt and the Oak Bridges Marine and good planning is very obvious. Because if we believed, or if we wanted to pave it all over, we would have said, wow, yes, there's some merit in that, and we would have let them go ahead. So I was insulted when people said, oh, you know, this is going to open up the floodgates. I think our record stands for itself, that this council and all councils have stood up for the environment, and that we've worked very hard to protect it. And I very much appreciate sending that message down to the province. But we have to be careful. If we say no, everyone says no, then the province is going to say, well, we asked you, and you did, you asked for it, we offered it to you, you didn't want it, so we'll do it. And then it comes down to, who do you trust to represent your constituents at that level? My comments.
Thank you, sir. And I was going to mention that this council and previous council that stood up, stood together and said that we needed to have development along the four hybrid series highways, and I think that's still, I do believe, and I'm hoping this council will continue to do that, because that is very critical. We've said that many times, we've been to the province on that, so I'm not sure if this worked, but I'm getting a little nervous now, I'm going to craft this resolution on this whole thing, but we'll come to it. Council DePaula, please. We've got a few more speakers, members of council, we're going to break for noon, and then we've got this integrity commissioner after lunch. We will be sitting for, ah, maybe a couple hours, so check your schedules, because integrity commissioner is something that this council has to do, has to do. You have to have this meeting to go through this. So, we got a few more speakers? Go. Counselor.
Being part of a municipality with, that's struggling also with the ratio of employment to residential lands, not as bad, but we're 88% in residential in Richmond Hill, and we have some challenges in it, primarily regarding the 404 corridor, we've got employment lands set aside, and at 404 major MAC, we're not talking about Oak Bridges Marine or the Green Belt, we're talking about other environmental considerations, we're talking about commenting from authorities that's been holding up our ability to put in a major employer there because of the timeframe that it takes for these applications. So I think Bill 66 is responsible by the province that they're really listening to what the obstacles are for certain municipalities to get some employment going. And I think the planning commissioner, or the GR chief planner here said it very well, I mean, there's nothing for, no cause for alarm. We've got, anything that's, anytime Bill 66 is going to be used, it's because a municipality is requesting it. So this is a downloading, a delegation of authority from the province to the municipalities, and I think that's where, that's where the decision-making needs to be. We, all of our municipalities in York Region for sure have proven that we are the best stewards of the environment, and very comfortable with our towns, our local tier municipalities being the ones who are making that decision and safeguarding, safeguarding the environment. And just so others are aware, there's some very unique situations where a town might need to ask the province for some special consideration to get some jobs in their communities. Thanks.
Well done, sir. I think your valid point of marriage to each other, the environment. Counselor Brown, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on Deputy Mayor DePaula and Mayor Paul LaGreenie, I think our number one concern is that we don't lose the ability to have a say in which of those lands are converted into employment. If we do nothing, the fear I have, and everybody should have, is that then we leave it up to the province alone to be the stewards of our environment, and previous provincial governments have demonstrated that, one, they have the power, and two, they've used that power to pull lands out of the Green Belt, out of the Oak Bridges Marine without our consultation. So very important for me is that, yes, as Council DePaula and Mayor Paul LaGreenie said, we need to make sure that we have the say in which lands in any area of development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Corrigan?
Sorry, I was just, sneezed there at the wrong time. Yes, as members of council know, and there's a sheet on your desk...
I haven't dealt with that one yet, I'm only dealing with number one white...
I know, but I just, I want to speak to the comments around the table.
Okay, go ahead, I thought you were trying to bring that one up.
No, no, I just want to mention that that's on the table. Certainly, I'm glad to hear that members of council are also concerned about the certain aspects of Bill 66, when it comes to the lack of public consultation, I think that's huge. And I don't know why the province would even contemplate putting that into a bill, to allow a municipality to move forward with a major development application without involving the residents, and I think that certainly needs to be adjusted. I'll get into detail more when we get into discussion of our resolution. But I think the concern is that, red tape is red tape, source water protection is not red tape. Source water protection, we all are very familiar with, and we all are very concerned about. And the concern I had, another members of council had as well, was again, having this in legislation form that allows municipalities to pass development without regard for those source water protection plans that are put into place. Should there be some flexibility with the Green Belt? I agree, absolutely, there's some areas where it makes sense. But I think this is going, this pendulum swinging a little too far to letting anything happen, not anything, but to let major development occur in areas that should have regard to the policies that have been in place for a number, a number of years. So I think we need to send that message down. Part of the other concern that I have with Bill 66 is that it doesn't tell us the criteria, it doesn't give us the full regulations. There's so many details that we don't know, that I think, and again, part of our resolution speaks to asking the province to give us those details, and to allow that commenting on those details. Agreeing to something without knowing what the details are, I'm concerned about it. So those are my comments at this point.
I'll call for you when I call 1.7, okay? Okay. That completes all the speakers. Now, just bear with me here, I just got to get an idea, Mr. Freeman, we, on your, on our destiny is just a motion to receive this information. If we were to craft a, if you were able to craft a resolution for two weeks today for council to consider, if we still have the time to put our time in for this?
So, Mr. Chairman, the comment period for Bill 66 ends on January 20th.
20th?
20th.
20th.
So my suggestion is, and we've outlined this in the memo, that we would submit our memo, our comments to the province by the 20th. We've left, we always usually do this, to say that additional comments will be forthcoming from our council, and we can endeavor to craft a resolution for two weeks to put that in front of you, to then send that down to the province. But we will notify the province that additional comments will, and also identify now the concern that additional time to comment on this is something that has come up by our council, and we can identify that to the province.
Okay. So we could add that, we could put a little bit firmer, a couple sentences in there, about we're concerned about the timing, we want to...
about, we're concerned about the timing, we want additional time. Part of your letter, you're sending to the province, but we will still craft the resolution for two weeks today. Is that satisfactory with members of council this time? We'll craft a resolution, but in this letter going down, we will definitely make a point of telling the province that we want additional time. You said sixty days, I think that's what you did say, sir. So I assume that would take us into February, March, into March or maybe early April. Okay, that'd be fine. Okay, Mayor Scott Pitti?
Sure, I'm fine with that approach, I just think Mayor Quirk's made an excellent comment, we should insert this in now in our commentary, is that, yes, we will provide more, more comments on the bill itself, but that we also want, when the regulations get introduced, we want appropriate opportunity to comment on those regulations as well, because quite often, we're always asked to comment on the bill, and then the other shoe drops and utilized, hopefully mackerel, is that what they meant? So I think we should insert that commentary into that memo now.
Sure. Okay, so that would be fine. So I just got a little, I had to know far where to go with this. So just before I bring this one forward, Councillor Jones, you're going to approve E one point one, one point three, one point four, one point five, okay? When I asked you to move the draft forward, you're going to approve all those, and that because Mayor Bobalock would like to talk to one point one, and Councillor Grassi and Mayor Quirk want to talk to one point seven, one point two, I'm sorry, one point two, right. So, so you, member council, to the other straight, one point one, one point three, one point four, one point five, Mayor Jones is about those items forward this time. All those in favor? Against, the motion's carried. Now, one point six will be the same, received by Councillor Jones with the addition of comments made about the timing, and what was else you said, Mayor Scott Pitti, you said about the, about more comments when the regulation comes out. I know the clerk's about that. That's part of that, and letter going down, and further, that this staff provided a further resolution in two weeks' time for council's consideration. All understood? I know, all those in favor? Against, the motion's carried. So that one does that, so I'm going to go back to one, E one point two, Mayor Bobalock one, and then I'll go to one point seven for Councillor Grassi and Mayor Quirk. Why, sir?
I said that we wouldn't include a public process regardless of whether they wanted us to or not, we would always go to the public and make sure that they were, they were heard. The reason why I'm saying that and why I wanted to speak to this item is because there were two motions at our council yesterday, Mayor Quirk, who will probably speak to, either both of them or just one of them. The other motion was a staff report, it was an excellent staff report, that didn't deal with just one schedule within Bill sixty-six, it dealt with all schedules within Bill sixty-six. It was endorsed unanimously by the town of Georgina. Our staff reviewed each schedule in Bill sixty-six, and it was important to recognize that there were some sections of Bill sixty-six which I think were, we didn't have a generous discussion, but I think most members of council, because we endorsed it, were important for our community, because it gave us a little bit more of autonomy when it came to some of the issues that we had to deal with, and I'm sure other municipalities around York Region would have to do the same thing. So I would hope that going forward, because it's always difficult when you come to the region of New York and you have piece of correspondence that might be circulated from a meeting the day before, but you don't know the full context of the reports that were before the council at the time and how they were decided. This was brought forward, this resolution, I fully understand it, I think it needed some more work than what was involved here, we need to talk to some more people, we need to talk to the province material. So I think going forward, and no deference to our clerk's department, they did what they had to do, but you need to have a totality of what the discussion was, and there was another report that was very well done. So all I would ask is that in the future, with respect to Bill sixty-six, that the report that was endorsed unanimously by the town of Georgina be included in whatever discussion is coming forward.
Okay, then, so what do we, Mr. Quirk has said that report was sent to us, those were, I guess?
No, Mr. Chair, we didn't receive anything official from the Georgina Clerk's office because it was pretty short notice, we did receive a letter from North Bollinger Forest Alliance, so that's included because it was relevant to this discussion today. I would imagine we'll receive something from Georgina within the next week or two, so we'd line that up with the council agenda when this item...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, all I'm saying is that our staff didn't circulate the recommendations, which I think was part of the recommendation, is part of that report to circulate it back here. So it hasn't arrived here yet, so this comes in isolation without the total picture with respect...
Oh, I'm misunderstood, so you're, do you want us to hold this down for two weeks or is that what you're saying?
Well, if Mr. Freeman's coming forward with some sort of future report, I would hope that this recommendation plus the original endorsed recommendation was unanimously approved by the town of Georgina be included in that report.
Okay, so maybe by then we'll have some comments from all of the...
Thank you.
Okay, so just the motion received, but okay. Mayor Quirk?
Yes, just the correspondence on our destiny is not directly from the town of Georgina, it's from the North Bollinger Forest Alliance. It just included the resolution that was passed, I will say not unanimously at the town, but Councillor Grassi is correct, there is a report that in our recommendations we did not specify to be sent here, and it should, you should have a copy of that because it was a well-written report. It does talk about the concerns that some of us have raised here in terms of, you know, lack of the public involvement, the concern about source water protection, does speak to concerns that in some cases, there are some areas, sorry, I'm excited to hear, that makes sense to make some changes. However, the resolution that we did separately was dealing with Schedule ten of Bill sixty-six, and the concerns that many of us had around our council table, that there was too much in that motion, too much in that bill that had issues in terms of lack of public consultation and the ability for development applications not to have regard for policies and plans that we all felt were important. And I, and I get it from other members of this council that, you know, we all stand strong today on protecting those policies and dealing with development applications that would have regard to it. My concern is that the bill doesn't say that. The bill could let a municipality go forward and do something that perhaps would have impacts that would be detrimental to the environment, detrimental to a neighboring municipality. So I think we need to send the report that we did, as Councillor Grassi indicated, that should come down to this council, to staff, to be able to be part of that bigger discussion.
Good, okay, and so I misunderstood, I'm here now because this was sent this to us, and we try to get it on the agenda, so the clerk does what he can, and we understand that you're just coming, so we will deal with it in two weeks' time when it comes, we'll take it directly to the council on that. So, yes, I understand now where it's coming from, so I misunderstood on that, so I apologize. So just all we now, just to receive it this time, that's all we're going to do. Okay, Councillor Grassi, you'll receive that this time? Okay, all those in favor? Against, the motion's carried. Okay, that was interesting.